The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet regular session on May 4th, 2021, 10:00 AM, Commissioners' courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 side Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the indication, pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag, official barrier, we will lead those.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for the many abundant blessings you bestow upon us. Thank you also for the opportunity to do meaningful work. Please give us wisdom as we do the business of the people of Brazos County. Please keep a watchful eye and protective overseeing of our military and first responders here and abroad as they guarantee our freedoms that we enjoy. Please grant wisdom to our federal, state, and local officials, and we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none. Number three is presentation and discussion of the Chamber Day survey results. Glenn.
Well, good morning. Glenn Brewer, President/CEO of Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if it's a statute, but I'm pretty sure that I'm supposed to start all my presentations with howdy.
Howdy.
Howdy, Judge. Howdy, Commissioners. I'm really excited to be here today to present the results of the business survey of our Chamber of Commerce 2021 Chamber Day. I'm really happy that there are results to be presented here today. As many of you may know, we were not able to do Chamber Day in 2020 for the first time in a long time after many record-setting days of volunteers and businesses visited. COVID shut us down last year, and we were very happy this year on March 25th to at least to help take another step toward normalcy and to try to go ahead and get our Chamber Day done. I will tell you, we did a lot of things to try to follow a social distancing guidelines and to get this Chamber Day accomplished. We did not have our breakfast in the morning where everyone gets together before they go out in their morning teams. We did not have our lunch where everyone is together in one room before they go out in the evening. We kept together in our pods of three or four individuals that go out in the community, and we walk into businesses and we just tell them how happy we are that they are in Brazos County, that they're in business here. We understand that they're hiring people, that they're paying taxes, that they're providing goods and services that make this a fantastic community. And so, as we were scaling that down a little bit, but we did, we were able to get that accomplished. Our numbers, we had over 150 volunteers in 2021. It's about half of what we had in 2019, and the results comes to our businesses visited. We visited about 730 businesses. We had visited over 1,400 two years ago. So about half the volunteers, half the businesses visited, but it was very successful what we got done, and we did get some meaningful results. Out of the 730 businesses we visited, we got 510 completed surveys, and those are the results that I'm going to present to you today. I just want to say thank you also when we go out on our teams, you know, we have teams of three and four. We try to put them together with a first responder as we go out in the community, and we appreciate the Constable's Office for showing up and sending us volunteers. Sheriff Dickey and the Sheriff Department had volunteers. Bryan PD, College Station PD, Bryan Fire Department, and College Station Fire Department all had volunteers come up and show, go out with us during Chamber Day. Before I start, I was fortunate enough on my car to drive around about half the day with me on our team with Sheriff Dickey. We had College Station Police Chief Couch, the Fire Chief, Chief Mann, Bryan Assistant Chief Darby, and it was probably the only time in my life I said it might be funny if I actually got pulled over because I had a lot of brass in the car with me. But Sheriff Dickey kept me online, and we got successfully through the day. We had, we visited a lot of businesses and we had a lot of fun. So with that, I will go in and present the business results. I believe each of you have a copy. And I'll be brief because there's a lot of detail in that you can look at afterwards, but I'll just give you a highlight maybe on each page as we go through. On page number one, the first question we ask on our survey is, is what do you expect the local economy to do in the coming year? And remember, all this was asked as of March 25th. These first questions are all the same questions that we ask every year because we want to have a continuity to our survey. You'll see we normally have about three years' results. You're looking at 2019, and there's a little gap which would have been 2020, and then 2021, so be aware of that. And then we have three additional COVID questions that we ask just as a one-time ask that I'll finish the presentation with. But on the first page, what do you expect our local economy to do? I think it's very interesting. If you look at 2019, when we did our survey, people were looking at 2020, and 80% expected 2020 to have an increase in our local economy. 3% with a decrease and 11% to stay the same. You fast forward through 2020 in the year of COVID and in March of 2021, obviously you can see about the same numbers. 80% expect a good year in the year that's coming, 3% with a decrease, and about 9% staying the same. But what you get into the different answers is we know that everyone did not either suffer or benefit the same during COVID. All these different businesses and the types of industry that they're in actually had different results. If you look in something you might expect, I mean, even people that are looking forward to next year, the arts and culture, our museums, only about 75% are looking forward to, and I think they're still feeling some hangover from COVID. But down at the bottom, our tourism, 100% of our tourism hospitality, people are expecting a very good year coming forward. And so, we're looking forward to that, and I agree with them. You can look through the different details as we go along, but we'll go on and skip to the second page. Compared to the tweet, that's page number two. Compared to the previous 12 months, how have sales changed? I think this is a particular one where you can see how different people responded differently. So they're in March of 2025, they're looking at the year that they just got through, and you can see where in 2019, people, 54% had increase in sales and 13% had a decrease in sales, and about a quarter stayed the same. But when you go to 2021, we still had about 45% said that their sales increased in the previous year, but we have 32% had a decrease in sales. And if you break that down and if you look at the numbers, you can see services, tourism, hospitality, recreation, you know, over 80% of those had a decrease in the previous year. But it's interesting, if you look at the restaurants, it's kind of in the middle of the page, restaurants, food and beverage, we went to 93 different locations, and actually 59% of those said they had an increase in 20, over 2019. And then, but we had 30% had a decrease, which was a large amount. So you can see, and hardly anybody stayed the same. You either had a really, you either had a good year or you had a bad year. And those are the results for that survey question. Go to page three. Our next question was outside of business, how would, and this is one of my favorite questions. Outside of business, how would you rate the overall quality of life in our community? And the responses are always excellent, good, average, or poor. Probably due to COVID, if you look at 2019 to 2021, 52% said excellent in 2019, and 48% said excellent in 2021. But I always look at the two good numbers, the excellent and good. In 2019, 90% of the people we surveyed said that this was a good or excellent community. And in 2021, when you add good and excellent together, it's 93%. So that has actually gone up. And of course, you go down to the rated poor is less than 1%, as it probably should be. All right, flip over to page four. Another interesting numbers, do you expect the number of employees to change in the next year? So they're looking at March of this year, they're looking forward to this coming year, 2021. Do you expect the number of employees to change? Back in 2019, about half of the people expected their employees to increase, and about half of them expected to stay the same. There wasn't hardly any decrease. And you look at 2021, it's not, it's not that much different. 52% are expecting to increase their number of employees this year. 2% are expecting to decrease, and about 41% are expected to be the same. Looking down in the breakdown, some interesting numbers, you know, on education, we have about 80% are expecting to increase. Manufacturing, 10 manufacturers we went to, 80% of those are expecting to increase their employees in the current year or the year going forward. Wholesalers, 80% of those are expecting to increase their employees in the year coming forward. So I think that those are some pretty good numbers. We'll flip over to page five. This question, how would you rate the quality of qualified applicants in our area for your type of business? And this is a tricky one because if you think about, what they're asking is not the quality of employees in Brazos County, it's the quality of employees in your type of business. So if you had a very specialty-oriented type of business that you had to recruit worldwide, you might say that is poor here in Brazos County because there's no one for my type of business. So it really, it really matters a lot what type of industry they're in for the quality of applicants in their type of business. You can see overall, in 2019, 43% said good, 44% said good. In 2021, it's not statistically significant, but it is an increase overall. When you get down into the weeds, you can see a lot of our, some of the better numbers come from real estate, real estate development, real estate development management, it's all up in the 85 to 100%. They think that we have excellent qualified applicants in their area. Really, there's very few that are not finding good applicants. I know some in the tourism, they're having a big lack of qualified applicants, but I think that kind of goes across all of our, what we're seeing at the chamber, especially in tourism and the retail and restaurants. There's a lot of jobs out there, but there's just not a lot of people applying for those jobs, qualified or not. But those are some interesting statistics to take a look at. Then if you flip over to page six through the next couple of pages, you can see these are just some pie charts on the numbers that you just saw. So in the interest of time, we'll just flip through those and we'll go to our COVID questions. Which start on page 11? And these are some interesting numbers. Have you applied for and received COVID-related government assistance or grants? So, you know, we talked to 510 businesses, asking them if they've received or applied for and received COVID-related government assistance. And interesting enough, overall, 215 said yes, and 294 said no. They had not received government grants. And if you look down and kind of in the, in the different types of industries, you can see financial services, banks, you know, 86% of those said they had not received government assistance. Interesting enough, all the way down to tourism and hospitality, over 80% of those did receive government grants and assistance. And that kind of makes sense because of the numbers that we saw earlier in the, in the survey. Manufacturing, right in the middle, out of 10 manufacturers, 50 got it and 50 did not get it. So it's 50-50. And of course, on restaurants, I would expect a high number, but 51% of the 93% restaurants in food and beverage, 51% received assistance, and 48% say they did not receive government-related assistance or grants. Next page, page 12. What impact did COVID have on your business in 2020? This is a little different than what did your business do? They were asking specifically, what impact did COVID have on your business? And you can see that, as we said before, the results are different according to what type of industry you're in. 20% of the people said their business increased due to COVID, and you can imagine what type of businesses those might be. But more likely, is what, 56% of our survey results said, 56% said it decreased, their business did because of COVID, and about 15% stayed the same. Looking at the different numbers, you can see which different types of industries said they were affected positively or negative by COVID. I'm just looking at the bottom. Wholesalers, 60% of our wholesalers said that their business increased due to COVID, and you can understand how that might be with people staying at home. But that is also some good numbers to look at. And then finally, on page 13, our last survey question on COVID, how would you rate your business recovery from COVID in 2021? And once again, it's important to think this was done in March, so it's done at the end of the first quarter of 2021. So you're asking them, you know, how, how's this past quarter done? How are you doing during the recovery? And this is very early in that, but it's also very positive response with over 70, almost 72% of the respondents saying that their business recovery, they have increased business from the COVID. So they're actually coming out of a pretty tough time. 3% says decrease and about 16% stays the same, with about 7% with no answer. But over 70% are saying that their business is recovering from COVID in 2021, and I'm sure that that has continued since the end of March. Individually, some of the numbers that came in, some especially good increases are in construction, education, manufacturing, very good numbers in recreation, wholesale. Interesting enough, on the back to our restaurants, food and beverage, 75% of them are saying that their business is recovering from COVID so far in 2021. With that said, I just want to say one thing that we did hear overall, and I can say from the voice of the Chamber of Commerce, we've been very proud of the leadership of Brazos County. I look around the nation and what all is happening, and I think that we've done very well in how we've handled flattening the curve, how we've tried to keep businesses open and keep people employed, and watching that, matching that with their health care. We really have heard a lot of good things. They're happy with the rate of the recovery coming quickly, but being aware that we all have to do our part to keep things safe. But we also realize, especially the business community, that keeping the county healthy and safe and functioning has a lot to do with keeping our businesses healthy, safe, and functioning. When we have healthy, safe, prospering businesses, that's going to bleed over, and we're going to have healthy, safe, and prospering nonprofits, arts, our churches, our education system. I think it all flows through the business community, and so we want to thank you for what all you've done for us over the past year. That's my presentation, Judge.
All right. Thanks, Glenn. And I'm glad that we got back to the survey this year, you know, something we missed last year, and so it's a good thing.
We'll do it even bigger and better next year, Judge.
Yeah, yeah, and hopefully we're getting more into that normal kind of life that we used to know, so.
I agree.
Thank you, Glenn, and thank you for the work the chamber does. Much appreciated.
Okay, we'll consider and take action on agenda items 4 through 21. Number four is approval of the following appointments, Brazos County Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, term appointments, May 4, 2021 to May 3, 2023.
Move approval A through I.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve A through I, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is approval of wire transfer of $245,128 to HHSC Funds for DY6 Uncompensated Care withheld payment for all eligible hospitals.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six, contract renewal of Madison County for juvenile prejudication detention services.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is approval of the following committee for the evaluation proposal for RFP 21-065 Electronic Communication Services.
Move approval A through F.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve A through F, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight, permission to advertise for RFP 21-065 for Electronic Communication Services.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is approval of agreement 21-131 for the use of subscription material with Lexi Poe for Constable Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is approval of service contract CIP 21-631 Water Mitigation for Brazos County Exposition Complex with Cotton Commercial USA LLC in the amount of $91,483.99.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is approval of agreement CIP 21-632 for Oracle Support for $9,000 with Enofin Solutions LLC.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is approval of final plot for the Baton Estates lots 1 through 3, 7.5009 acres, being the remainder of 20 acres, volume 10516, page 164, James D. Alcorn League, A-60, City of Bryan ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, site located in Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is approval of sudden link communications utility permit to lay 6,300 feet of fiber optic cable for internet services on the east side of Coraber Road, Wixon Ridge, to just past Whitetail Lane, sites located in Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is approve the Treasury report for September 2020 and quarter ending September 30, 2020.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is approve Treasury report for October 2020.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is approval of expenses journal for Brazos County's FY 2021 third quarter cash contribution, $119,507.25 to Brazos County Health District.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval A through E.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is Commissioners' Court minutes for the following dates, April 5, 2021, regular meeting, April 13, 2021.
Move approval A through D.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve A through D, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19 is budget minimums, budget minimums FY 20/21, 30.1 through 30.6.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is personnel change status.
Move approval.
Second.
A and B.
Motion made and seconded to approve A and B, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 21 is payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 81071183 through claim number 8107326, and claims number 9001778 through claim number 9001833.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 22 is juvenile director's report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We have 26 total youth in the facility, 26 boys, two girls. We have eight in medical isolation, and we have 24 youth on electronic monitoring.
Okay, all right. Thank you. 23 is sheriff's report on inmate population.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Our count this morning is 523. 461 males, 62 females. We have 31 on electronic monitoring with seven pending. We currently have zero positive cases in the facility, and we still have two employees out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. 24 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge Peters, I was going to ask if in the future, I'm interested on how our law enforcement here in Brazos County does such a great job with their public relations. We don't seem to have any problems in dealing with the public, but I'd love to know what our training programs are and if we coordinate between the Constables and Sheriff's Department on training for how to deal with problem cases. Wonder if we could consider that in the future.
And you're probably aware, the tax office closed today. There was a, one of the fiber cables were cut yesterday afternoon, and so they're down. They don't have telephone, don't have internet, so they closed today, but if the storm has passed by, I know they're going to be on top of getting that repaired, and hopefully we'll be back up tomorrow.
Man, that's, that's got to be a splicing nightmare. I can only imagine.
And then the rental assistance program, I think, is moving along. They told me that the problem, they're getting applications, but a lot of them are incomplete. So make sure if you fill out an application to get it complete, because it's got to be complete, or it can't, they can't move forward with it, so.
Are they contacting those applicants to get the applications complete?
Sure, they are. It would just speed things up if it was complete when they got it, so. And we want to make everybody aware still that that rental assistance program is there, and so if you had a loss of income and weren't able to pay rent, this is not only in the past, but into the future some, so.
If your job prospects are not very good, and you think you're going to have trouble making rent payments, this program's for you as well.
Yeah. So just bring that out. That's really all I've got. Anybody?
I just, we have less than, I think, if I'm right, less than 40 days left in the legislative session, and there are a number of bills that are out there that are in a state of approval or not that have some kind of significant impacts on counties. And if it wouldn't be, I mean, Ms. Roach gives an excellent update to all of us, but if she wouldn't mind maybe next meeting or the meeting after that, kind of picking up a little bit of, okay, what's happened and where is it, and things we might want to be aware of, and make the community aware of as far as that goes as well. I would appreciate that if that's not, not too difficult. You pretty well got your, you know, finger on the pulse from what I can tell in the reports you give us.
Does a great job. Anything else? If there's nothing else, we'll move on to 25, which is call for citizens' input and our concerns.
Judge, there's a gentleman in the back.
Come on up and give us your, to the microphone, give us your name and.
Patrick Giamara. I live at 213 Fairway Drive in Bryan, Texas, across from the old Bryan Municipal Golf Course. I'm self-proclaimed mayor of Midtown Bryan, and I have been for the last few years, trying to clean up the city of Bryan. I ran for mayor of Bryan to try to clean up and help the citizens of Bryan. My campaign was working for the citizens. On November the 5th, 2019, deputies were dispatched at the Brazos Center for a report of a male subject later identified as candidate of Bryan Mayor Patrick Giamara. Assaulted a female subject, Susan Geller. On this day, elections were being held. The CAD also identified that Mr. Giamara was impending access at the polls. The report was made by Ms. Trudy Hancock, who is election coordinator and was. the polls. The report was made by Ms. Trudy Hancock, who is election coordinator and was also on her way to the center to look into the matter. CID Deputy Jesse Ostigas, Stegan, arrived at the scene and spoke with Ms. Geller, who reported she was here this morning when Mr. Giamara approached her. Ms. Geller was here, her, near her car at the, at the time, and he came out into the parking lot. She said he wanted her to vote for him. At the same point during the contact, Mister, with Mr. Giamara grabbed Ms. Geller by the arm hard, and firefighter nearby came over and helped her. Ms. Geller left and returned later this evening and saw Mr. Giamara. Mr. Giamara. At this point, Ms. Geller, Mr. Giamara grabbed her by the arm hard, and firefighter nearby came over and helped her. Ms. Geller left, returned later this evening, and saw Mr. Giamara was still at the center, which was when she contacted Ms. Hancock. Ms. Geller declined to file charges even after being asked numerous times by Lieutenant Pollock. One of her last comments was she did not feel the incident was considered assault. Ms. Hancock wanted to issue a criminal trespass warning for the center. So Lieutenant Pollock contacted County Attorney Brenda Bailey and explained the incident to her. Since there was an election taking place and Mr. Giamara was a candidate, he could not be removed from the center. There's so many questions about this false police report that was filed against me. There's a fine line, what is a false police report? And a false police report nowadays is against the law to file a false police report. Unfortunately, the Secretary of State, Election Secretary of State didn't think there was any criminal acts. But there's so many questions on this that I've wrote a few of them out, and if I have time, I'll read them to you.
Well, I, we're, I think. Yeah, so.
So would I, I would like to leave this with the county judge, please, Mr. Peters.
This ready, that's not in my jurisdiction, but you're welcome to leave it, that's fine. Thank you.
I would like to clear my name up. I was falsely accused, and I never touched anybody or did anything.
Okay, well, your four minutes is up. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any other citizen input? Hearing none, Willie Jern.